I'm starting. This one now. So I should be in the right one now. Okay, here comes some people. Whew, okay.
Please wait for meeting host to let you know.
Yeah, I'm working on it. I gotta, I gotta. Admit, 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 admit. Oh, my, my son is coming to the meeting.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you Jeff.
All right.
Little meeting, little meeting mix up there, but we're good now.
All right.
Can you hear us Jeff?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just gonna finish admitting people here and we will get going.
Yeah.
I've got a flurry. All right, as it is, it's actually 7:02. And I'm gonna call this meeting to order. We're gonna try things a little differently today than those of you that were here last Monday for our work session. That was not our finest hour. We tried something a little different and it was not the best. So bear with us, this in-person and Zoom meeting is a little bit different. We're gonna, we're gonna try to do the best we can. So I have six members of the board with me tonight. Jeff is via Zoom, so I do have another camera setup. So when people of the board are speaking, I will switch, I will remember to switch to that camera. And that is, that's the goal. And my board members are all going to speak up quite a bit because we, next, next meeting will have a directional mic. But tonight they're gonna have to speak up and so they may, they may remove their masks. I'm, I'm gonna allow that because I, it's, it's tough. So we're gonna do the best we can. We're gonna stay safe at the same time and we all hope that you are safe as well. So what was that? I, yep, it's recording. So we're good. All right. Thanks to my board for keeping me in line here. So will you, what was that? All right, we're gonna get. You know, here to. I think that's what it's usually.
Okay. Maybe it's me, maybe it's me. Sorry.
Okay, well. Okay, Jeff, Jeff.
Yep, yep.
You can hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Jeff, well, that's okay, Jeff can hear, so I mean, I hope everybody else can as well. So we will begin this evening with the approval of our agenda. And our agenda. There, there are no corrections to my knowledge. Mr. Bransoy is right here next to me. So no corrections to the additions.
No additions or corrections.
So if I. Okay, motion is made by Sagidol. Seconded by Sandy Benson. Any discussion or questions about anything? I'll show you what they look like out here. Oh, yep, so where I am at, that's where the board is, was at. So no discussion, so with that, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Yes. We have to do a roll call. See, I remember one thing and I forget something else. All right, so we're gonna do a roll call vote because that's how we do Zoom meetings. So we are going to begin with Jeff.
Yeah.
Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Thank you, John. All right, moving on, we are going to switch that camera and recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Thank you all for, for taking time out of your busy lives to appear on Zoom with us. And we'll try to keep the meeting going, hopefully having good discussion and being respectful. So at this point of our meeting, we will be doing public forum. And our public forum is the opportunity for public input. It's a time of listening by the board. So each person gets up to two minutes of time. And what I'm asking is that, as soon as I get my timer ready here. I don't know where my time. That at this point, if you would like to speak, please unmute yourself and say your name and I will write you down and acknowledge you. And then when everybody has decided if they would like to speak right now, we will go from there. So if you would like to speak right now during the public forum time, please unmute your mic and state your name. Would anybody like to speak at the public forum? I'll ask one more time. Would anybody like to speak during the public forum? Please unmute your mic and state your name. All right, hearing no one, we will move on. All right, and we'll move on to consent items. And we only need one motion to approve these consent items. And we have approving bills for payment and approving the minutes from the August 24th, 2020 meeting. Motion is made by Boline. Seconded by Bookdole. And is there any discussion or questions on anything? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Moving on to personnel. Number one, approve Brittany, Whitney, approve Whitney Haney as a junior high volleyball coach, beginning with the 2020-2021 school year pay level E, step zero of the 2017-2019 EA master agreement.
So moved Benson.
Motion is made by Benson.
Seconded Sagidol.
Seconded by Sagidol. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we will begin with Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
And I myself, and I, I am an I. Motion carries. Number two, approve Carrie Gass as a volunteer volleyball coach, beginning with the 2020-2021 school year. Motion is made by Boline. Seconded by Benson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we will begin with John.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number three, approve Kiana Johnson as a volunteer volleyball coach, beginning with the 2020-2021 school year. Motion is made by Bookdole. Seconded by Benson. Any discussion or questions? Hearing no questions or discussion, we will start with Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number four, approve the resignation of Nancy McNamara, little warriors professional, paraprofessional, effective August 25th of 2020. Motion is made by Sagidol. Seconded by Bookdole. Any questions or discussion?
Dale, do we have a replacement for her?
Yes, I believe the, I believe so.
All right, that's all I was wondering. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Nancy for her, for her years of service at Bold. She's been here quite a while, so thank you to Nancy. Any other discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number five. Approve a one-year leave of absence for Lynn Rudin for the 2020-2021 school year.
So moved Boline.
Motion is made by Boline. Seconded by Benson. Any discussion or questions?
We have, we have somebody to fill this spot.
I'm not sure, yeah. Say it again.
Yeah, the.
It's the same staff numbers that we had last year.
Okay, so.
Different personnel.
Two positions that the name, you know, the person filling it switched, but the staff hasn't been reduced.
Okay, I don't know if everyone heard that, but number nine, actually, we're gonna have the ECFE or the preschool staff that we're going to approve. And it's the Derek, Mr. Flann said it's the same number of people that we've had in the past, it's just a different, different staff. So we'll get to that, so. Let's see, we were discussing and there's nothing else, we will vote. Now we will start with Jeff.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number six, approve the resignation of Patsy Cornelius, special education paraprofessional, effective September 2nd of 2020. Motion is made by Sagidol. Seconded by Bookdole. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number seven, approve Jeanette Jangula as a food service staff, beginning with the 2020-2021 school year, pay grade three, step one of the 2017-2019 MSEA agreement.
So moved Boline.
Motion is made by Boline. Seconded by Benson. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote and we'll begin with Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number eight, approve revised contract for Jody Nybauer, assistant business manager. Motion is made by Sagidol. I will second that. If I remember what my name is. All right, got that. All right, is there any discussion or questions on the revised contract?
Can you kind of explain that to us a little bit?
Jody's contract?
Yep, yes.
Okay, Jody was, was hired to be assistant business manager or assistant business manager to work with Lindsay. Lindsay's here one day a week and then she would be doing the rest loaded. And so she's, we've been trying to fill that position since middle of January. And we've had a struggle getting people who are qualified and Jody was by far the one that was most qualified we interviewed. And so we offered it to her and, and so she started well. Then became an opening for a part-time position in early childhood. And Jody started thinking about her position and seeing that through little kids and she's, she's, and oh, I'd like to work in that program and was interested in a halftime position, which we had available. And then we asked if she could reduce her position to halftime. And so in working with Lindsay and myself, we decided to do that. And but we had to have somebody, the area that we were short in was the payroll. And that's a big undertaking. And Jody felt comfortable with all the other parts of it, AP part of it and all the bills and everything that she was comfortable with. But she really didn't care to do the payroll. And so we talked with this Southwest co-op and they do this for other districts, we'll do the payroll. And so that's basically, we've had the payroll doing it since probably March. Because we've been trying to fill that position and so, so it's taken some time. And so Lindsay talked with, with the co-op and they were, were willing to take that on as, as a contract. So that's what we did. It's an important position. And I think my concern was of making errors in those reports. And anybody who works with payroll, no, that's not an area where you can make mistakes. And so the person that's in that position is very critical. And the timing of the year right now, we did not feel we wanted to go out for a search. And so that's why we decided, let's go with the co-op. We talked to them and they wanted a two-year contract, said, give us this one year and then we'll evaluate it and see where we want to go with it from there. So that's where we ended up. I'm comfortable with the co-op. I know it'll be done right. They're doing it for other schools and so they're very familiar with the processes. So that's, Lindsay had spent a lot of time in training different individuals that we had hired and, but didn't work out. And so, so this is another situation where Jody, just the time of her life right now, she just didn't want bad pressure of payroll. And so that's what we did. And so I think it'll work out well. I'm very comfortable with the co-op doing that. I'm very comfortable in what Jody is doing. Every week Lindsay comes, it's less questions. And so you feel that Jody's getting a real feel for it and is doing a good job. And so we're very comfortable with that. So, so for the remainder of this year, this is what we'll do and then go from there. So it is in their, the contract now that we have for the Southwest co-op. It's in there right now, so that billing is, is ahead of us, so.
So did we reduce, did she reduce down to halftime then you said Dale?
The halftime position, she is half paid, half as a business assistant business manager and the halftime is a pair. She has two contracts, so, yep.
Any other discussion, any other questions?
She can work, she works, that worked out well. She works the morning in the early childhood, she's there at 7:45. And then she works till 11:30. And then she comes for about a half an hour in the office and then she goes, takes her lunch break and then comes back and works the afternoon. So it really worked out well. We could, we were able to do that.
So when you would you say the position was full-time, so in order, at this point, if we add Jody's position plus the exo, are we gonna basically come up with the same amount of money?
Pretty much, yeah, the co-op has contracted her, what she's doing right now would be pretty, pretty much a wash.
And she's also not an ECFE Friday, because they don't have Friday classes, so she could be in the business office all day Friday.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All right. I hit the wrong button. Hearing nothing else, we will vote and we will begin with John.
Aye.
Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. All right, moving on to number nine, approve the preschool staff as follows. We have Lindsay Long, who is the coordinator and the preschool teacher. Cassidy Fisher, who's a preschool teacher. Lori Lubitz, the parent educator. Josette Repke, the ECFE teacher. Jody Nybauer, the paraprofessional. Kathy Herdina, paraprofessional. Derek Lothert, paraprofessional. And Tanya Miller-Ziller, a paraprofessional. Motion is made by Sagidol. Seconded by Bookdole. Any discussion or questions on any of those? All right, not hearing any discussion, we will vote. We will begin with Sandy.
Aye.
Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. All right, moving on to reports. And we will begin with our superintendent's report.
First I want to review the Bold Learning Plan and School Learning Plan, a little different situation than we've been in the past. And but it's really, I think, has been a start that is for all the unknowns. I think the staff and the students are doing an outstanding job. And I don't know what you're hearing as parents, but wow, they've one thing I think we started a year out with everybody coming in. And I think that was so key and I think that's very positive. And it's, it's interesting to see just the dynamics of a school district. Of when you take an element of the teachers out of the learning process. I think, you know, last spring was tough for everybody involved, the teachers, adults, the students. And really left a sour feeling under, taste in your mouth. But came back this fall and we started out with everybody in-house and the teachers were there, the students were there. And I really compliment them and I you know, we started talking about all the issues we're gonna have with the start of school. We've gotta wear masks and we've got to social distance, we've got it. Hygiene, physical hygiene, we're concerned about all that. The students came in and they've just done outstanding job. And I think, I walk down that hall and I look at kids and I can't see their mouths, but I can look in their eyes and they're just, they're bright. They're, and that smile is there, but they have a mask on. But you talk about a start of, in a year that we don't really know where we're going and what we're doing. Anyway, we got off to a good start that first week and then the numbers were escalating, went up with the pieces, so we moved to high school and we went to hybrid. And now that's a different term, we haven't used and we haven't worked with it. But the high school took a day at Monday when we made the transfer. And then the staff worked on what, on the schedule and getting ready to meet with students every two days a week. And then they would be online three days a week. And then one day they, they had it put together, but they'd been planning on this for some time, just wasn't overnight like it was last March. But they did a good job of getting ready and I think they got the students ready. Because we started out Tuesday, Wednesday, we were, we had the A group, the red group in. And Thursday, Friday, we had the silver group in. And it went very well that first week. Well then, we got in the first full week of that where we go, the red group was Monday, Tuesday. Wednesday is a, is a staff workday and a day for working individuals with groups and small groups of students. And they're available for that, plus then the planning that takes place. And then that's when they, when, then he has his deep clean or he can come in and clean everything well before the next group of students come in for the Thursday, Friday and then the silver group comes in. And it really has worked out outstanding. It's been very, it's out very well and I I think everybody would like to have all the kids in school full-time, but we're not to that point yet. Then the elementary has been able to go K through six, the preschool through six with their, everybody in session. And so that's been a real plus. But we're watching that very carefully because the numbers keep going up. The count for Rendell County and why we, we don't know. And so Mr. Benson is really, he's here tonight, so I want him to address it too, is that he's working very hard to figure out a way that we can staff it and keep kids, as many kids as we can daily in the building. You take kindergarten and first and second grade and you put them in a hybrid where they're, they need to go home and do work. You know, that's, I think, takes away from the learning. And so if you, he's done some thinking now of how he can arrange it. The issue is staff. When you create another section of a class, that means we gotta have another teacher or somebody to supervise them. So, so you wanna talk a little bit about it, Mr. Benson, then just to?
If, if you want to.
If you want to, if you don't, that's, you're comfortable there. But he's trying to think of a way where we can staff the options he's looking at.
We can have you go in front of the well, the, yeah, either way, either way.
Go right in the middle. Keep your six feet though.
It's like you're, it's like you're, yeah, it's like we're having a, exactly. All right.
Um, so as we found out last year in the spring, you know, K4, I think my just struggle to do things by themselves at home. So my, I guess my, my way of thinking here the past two, three weeks is what can we do to keep pre-K or pre-K six in this building? Right now, our third and fourth grade classes are right around that 17 mark. So if we get rid of some things in our classrooms, we can probably spread out six feet. Not, I shouldn't say probably, we can. My K1 and 2, I'm probably gonna have to split into a third section to keep them here. I've been talking with a few different groups to get this accomplished. I still have a few more groups to talk about or talk with to make sure that we could do this. But that's, that's kind of a plan right now is to see how long we can keep our pre-K through, you know, 4, pre-K through 6 in this building. Because I think that's gonna be beneficial for all those, all those students. I can't give a whole lot of details yet because it's still talking with everybody involved. And I don't have specific details yet, but that's kind of the plan here at the moment. If I split K through 2 into three sections, kindergarten's gonna roughly have 11 kids in a class. First grade will have roughly 15. And second grade will have that 16, 17 mark. So K4 will have roughly 7, 11 to 17 kids in a class. But we'd only be splitting K1 and 2.
I wanted him to share this because I think people don't understand how much thought goes into all of these learning plans we're looking at. But what Mr. Benson keeps focusing on is how is gonna be the best for kids? And, and I think it's easy to, or I know it's not easy, but you know, we could just say, let's go hybrid with the elementary also. But think of how many of those kindergarten and first and second and third graders, what are they gonna do in those days off? And really, now really Brett has spent some sleepless nights wondering, you know, what are some solutions here we can keep kids in there? And I think that would be really a plus for Bold School that we can somehow keep that group in here. And it, and it's, and I think he's got a plan that I think is gonna take some working together of staff, some teaming. it's going to take some working together of staff, as some teaming. But it could bring people together and it could be a lot of positives coming out of it. So, so that's what our, our K through six predicament right now. And we also would like to keep our preschool program the best we can. The first thought before school started was that would be probably a program would be, we'd have to take away for a while because we'd need the staffing. But we're, we're working on ways that we can keep that program going also. So I think you know, he's spent a lot of time, a lot of hours working within. The staff has been very receptive to this at this point and trying to figure out, you know, how the best to, to handle this situation. So, so I want him to share that. And mainly then because it's, it's, we're talking about kids and learning. And, and that's important. That's why we're here. And so he's got a staff. I think he's got working as a strong team and we'll continue with that. So the big issue is counties, or the county numbers keep going up for COVID cases. This last week it was at 19.02. You know, and it's stretching, we're stretching in what we're doing right now. And according to the state, we've got these areas and you've looked at the plan and know the, the different levels. And we should, do we start looking at the next level or not? I talked with Mr. Mitten late this afternoon and things are going well right now in the high school. And so I think they'll find out. Their advisory group meets every Wednesday afternoon. They have that discussion and they look at numbers. And then they're the ones that help the, help us make a decision of, do we move levels or not? Again, our safety of our kids is, is very important. And so we want to focus on that. But the number keeps going up and I, I, we can't get a handle of why. There's a lot of areas that have, have had the numbers increase and it's because of something. A community event or something like that that took place and it, and it spread quickly. So there's all kinds of scenarios like that. The neighboring districts have, have had to deal with. And I want, I know a district that just prior to school, there was a big gathering of the students. And all of a sudden, they were going to be in-person learning. By the time school started, they were down to hybrid because of that one event. And talking with the superintendent last week, they said, you know, I think they learned something because their numbers have gone down big time. And so now they're back. I think this week they're going back into in-person learning again. We'd like to see that here. So I asked the county, there's, I said, what, what's contributing to this? What? And they can't find a hotspot where anything, an event that has occurred that has created the numbers going up. So that's kind of a, that's makes it tougher to deal with. And really, what she shared with me is that they do not have a specific hotspot or a cause. But they consider it a community-wide situation. And I share that with you because I think we as adults in the communities have to take a look at, you know, what is it, the behaviors of the adults? Because our students are doing outstanding. They wear their masks and I think they're proud of them. And they, and they, they keep their distance. And they're talking about it. And they're washing hands and using water bottles. And so I really compliment our students. And, and our staff has trained them into doing that. And I made a comment to one of the teachers one time. He said, I, you know, I'm, I'm impressed with what's happening here. I said, why? Because we're bold. We're better than anybody else. Woo! And, and what a comment to me. And so, so I share that with you. So it's a community issue. We as community members of Bold, are, are we aware, you know, of our, our surroundings? You know, I don't like wearing a mask any better than anybody else. It's hard for me. But when I'm in the public, then, then I, I feel I have to. And so I think that takes a community gatherings, weddings or funerals. I think we need to take a second think, you know, thought about that. And so I mentioned that because I think as, this is a community issue. This is Rendell County. And the numbers are going up and how can we possibly get control of them? We want kids in school, the staff wants them here, the staff wants to be here. And I think in school, they're doing an excellent job. I had a Zoom meeting last Thursday morning with area superintendents. And, and I made that comment. I said, you know, I said, our students are just doing an outstanding job. They're talking about it and they're, they're happy in the hallways. And I said, I, but when they leave the school, then what? I don't know. You know, are, are we as adults, are we remembering to adhere to the CDC's recommendations? Are we thinking about group gatherings? And so so I just share that with you because I think we want kids in school because that's the best for them. And that's what we're trying to do. So, so I share that with everybody. So if we can promote that somehow, you know, that would be great. So if we get that number going the other way, and I don't know what it'll take. But it's not the school alone, it's not the county alone, we've got to do it together. So, so that's why I think that is so you know, Brett is trying to keep the elementary here full time. And that's, we want to do that. And we'd like to get the high school back in house. And, and so, so we need to, we need to be thinking about that down the road. The second item I had was the movement of the K through four move to, to this campus. And it's, it's been going, going very well. Denny and his crew really had things ready. The teachers took time and got their classrooms ready and, and their spacing, their, as best they can. And so we're looking at that as, as we move forward. But the teaching staff worked hard to be ready for the fall. And again, I think the kids are, are being rewarded for it. So I think they're doing a good job. Third thing is a tax levy report. You've got the summary. And, and that's for your information. If you want to see the whole document, let me know and I'll get it for you. There's 40, 40 some, 41 pages or 45 pages, something like that. Full of formulas. And go to this and go to that. And you can do that. This year, the levy is going to decrease to 19.95% decrease, which is good. The biggest reason is because this is the last year that the, we'll have a debt. After this year, it'll be zero debt for the district. And so that's why, why the decrease. And so this has what our excess levy referendum that we passed last fall is, is in this now. And so this is the net now for the, the bond that we, that we will pay off this year. So, so that's what, that's a good sign. And if you want that report, I've got it and we can give it to you. And it's not final. Right now, tonight, what we'll prove is a maximum because there'll be different variances throughout between now and, and the November date when we officially will approve a dollar a month. And so that, that isn't such if this is, we, we allow for tonight, we'll say the call is a maximum. And then if it changes, then we'll get that. Okay? Fourth one is enrollments for the new year, the 2021 school year. And right now, the K through 12 enrollment is at 623. And that, that's a that's a drop in, in what was, what we had last year. The main reason being is because we graduated a large class and we brought in a smaller kindergarten. So that was a net difference, basically. As far as projections, where we're, we were two students off what we were budgeting for. And so we're right on. So Lindsay did a good job with that. You look at our, our levy sheets and that's based on enrollment. And so right there, it's right, we're right on there too. So that's we, we check and make sure how accurate that is. So so with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Well, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Bransoy? Okay. We will.
You see, we're going to be zero debt this year. What is this year, is that January?
Our last payment, I think, is February. This is, this is a 2021 levy that we're approving. So it'll be payable, what's payable next year?
I think I asked this after those. That, that means the parking lot, et cetera, will be paid off.
Yes. Yep.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment. I just want to say, those that are on the Wednesday Advisory Committee, I appreciate everybody putting in their time, their effort. You know, I've talked to people that are on it and they find it very beneficial and they enjoy being on it. So I just wanted to say thank you to that. And a thank you to Mr. Benson for trying to figure out ways and maneuvering to keep these kids K through six in, in person. I feel that's very important as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dale?
Yes.
Is there a way that we can narrow down our numbers for the county to maybe help us make some decisions? Like for our community to community or not?
What do you mean, the COVID numbers?
Correct.
Well, we don't have control over that.
I know, I know we don't, but is there a way we can?
Okay, so I, I would like to speak to that because this was, when we first started this advisory committee, it kind of was told to us that, you know, we would be really being able to react with what was happening in Bold. So, you know, Bird Island, Olivia, we don't get like Lillian's numbers because that's in Canoai County. But okay, and so that's what we were told. And honestly, that is, it's changed somewhat because I think MDH has come to these smaller counties and said, well, you have people working in Rendell but living in Olivia. So you have a lot of people traveling back and forth and, you know, it's 10 miles. That kind of thing. So that is, is kind of changed somewhat from what we were first told, which throughout this whole pandemic, things, you know, we start with one thing and it kind of changes to something else. But that was really frustrating for me because I just felt like we have, you know, we have no local control. Just how I was feeling. And now if it's just all about the numbers, why are we meeting? You know, if it's just about this number, why are we doing this every week? Well, we're doing it because it's part of the governor's plan. Plus it has changed. So a little bit like we are probably at the top end. We probably should be with the high schoolers. We probably should be closer to level three. But our Rendell County Public Health nurse that we talk to weekly, she said, well, here's the deal. The Department of Health is giving you, so if you were in two, which we are now, and if you really needed to be in four, but you're still in two, they are going to, the, the state of Minnesota is going to come after you, basically, or you know, make you change. But right now, we're maybe, maybe one level off. So we do have a little leeway there. We're able to stay in level two and see how our numbers pan out this week. So we do have, but it's just, yeah, I don't think that we have I'm just really honest, I don't think we have as much control over this. If, if the numbers are saying what they're saying, we're kind of have to follow and be safe. I, I think that's the most important thing about it is being safe. So, sorry, I, I took that, but
Actually, on the Rendell County Public Health site, it tells you by town. It's broken down, there's a bar graph broken down by town of how many cases are in each town.
Yep, they did do a dashboard kind of thing. That has been very helpful. So
And the other thing that, that was shared with me today was that the large, the, most of the cases are coming from the 20 to 60-year-olds, which I thought that was an eye-opener to me. Most of the new cases that are coming on are coming from 20 to 60-year-olds. And so so I think that's something we need to think about too. But as far as the state, as long as, you know, we still have local control.
We do.
You can. And, and I've, I've corresponded twice now with the State Department and we've talked about that. Their comeback to you is if it's what's best for your school and you think your students are best, they're going to support it. And so that's what we've done so far. And one thing that Mr. Benson asked was, could we do it by grade levels? You know, could we separate the K four to be, we're going to focus K three and make sure they're all here? And so then in talking with the State Department, they said, if that fits your system, if that's what's best for the kids, then go for it. So I think there is some leeway there. Those numbers that are there are guides. Nothing is locked in stone that you've got to do this or that. There's a recommendation and so, so we look at that. But, but still, Jeff, you ask, what can we do to control those numbers? I think we have to look at ourselves. And we got to say, are we doing the things to help stop or control the spreading? And, you know, you've done a lot of reading on that and you get all different things coming out about it. So but it does get back to the individuals and, and what are we doing to control, you know, to help? We're not going to, there, there's still got a lot to learn about this. This pandemic, it's, you know, you listen and read about every time, every day you read something, something else is different. And they don't know. We're in the unknown. And that's why I think it's tough for teachers right now. Wow, there's a load on those people. And I, I feel for them. And we're our schools aren't built around this. We're used to everybody coming in, doing their thing and doing a good job of it and everything works out fine. We're not used to putting up all these hurdles we have to get over. So the other thing is that I, I feel bad about is that schools aren't structured for this. It's not like it used to be. Right now, I think our staff is really stressed. And like parents are. And so we've got to work together and, and work through this pandemic. We, we got to support each other. And that means parents and that means board members, it means all of you. Let's keep that focus where it belongs. It's but our kids are doing well. They're learning. And they're doing good things. And you look at our numbers there, we're, we're okay. But
Well, I hope we can keep them in as long as possible.
That's our goal. And that's what Mr. Benson was talking about was keeping this system going. And so we will.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Bransoy? All right, moving on. And we will move on to our elementary principals' report, which is in our packet. Does anyone have any questions or is there anything you'd like to add, Mr. Benson?
The only thing I'd like to parent-teacher conferences spend the year. That was a huge success for us this year. With COVID and everything, it's good to everybody in the classroom. And be more than in the classroom for like three minutes. Over house, nice, relevant to students. Put your stuff in and basically get out. The, the parent-teacher conferences lasted for 20 to 30 minutes. That was huge for our group. So we're going to plan on doing that again for next year. At first, I want to thank the parents too. That was a big success for them as well. And I, I can't thank my staff, teachers, support staff, janitors, cooks. I mean, everybody that helps any of our kids any day. This is a different time and everybody is stressed. You can walk up to the community, everybody's stressed. We're stressing here too, just trying to do what's best for the kids. So any support that we can get, it's huge for our staff as well. Pat on the back goes a long ways right now. Hat on the back goes a long ways right now. So that's just one thing that we can't can't knock right now either. So that's kind of my nutshell. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving on, we have our high school principals report and I don't. I'm going to check through the list here again. I don't think Mr. Menton is on this call or on this meeting.
He's got a report in.
Yes, and he has a report in. So if you have any questions on his report, please shoot him an email or give him a call. All right, moving on, we will do the activities report with Mr. Flann.
This might take us the rest of the night. This guy has been running through the mail.
I've been going through all of the changes that we have for football and volleyball specifically over the next few weeks as games get started. I asked Mr. Bransoy probably about a month ago if we could form an athletic advisory committee. He agreed to that. So we met this morning and that group was comprised of Mr. Benson and Mr. Bransoy, Melissa, Brian Pingeri as a staff representative and Carrie Myers as a parent rep. And then Denny Spielman was on that as well, just because a lot of what we are going to have to do ties in with Denny's responsibilities. Ultimately, I got 15 pages of volleyball and football regulations from the State High School League last Thursday that we're trying to implement. Just a quick rundown, because we were on a call for, we were on a Zoom for about an hour this morning, me trying to explain all this and then congrats to you for listening to me as I went through it. We have no visiting teams using our locker rooms, so that keeps other students that might carry some infection outside of those areas. We have no fans allowed at any indoor activities right now. Our outdoor activities, cross country is a non-revenue event, so we don't charge for that. Typically, you don't see more than 250 fans at a cross country meet, which I don't think we've had of either of ours, although they have been better attended for smaller meets than than they have been in the past. Football wise, we're allowed to have 250 people at a game. As a home team, we will get 150 tickets. And as an away team, we'll get 100 tickets. We have to figure out how to distribute those without having community people who are non-essential come into the building. Our plan at this point is we're going to issue two tickets to every player that they're allowed to purchase. All tickets will be $6. We're not going to have students in adult pricing because it's just too much to worry about right now. So every ticket is six bucks. Once our students decide that they want to buy theirs, we could sell like 80 to 90 to students and coaches essentially to get parents and coaches' families and things to the games. From there, we're going to open it up to our student body to try and get the kids to be able to come to the games. And I understand that there's going to be people in the community that are going to be upset about this. But ultimately, I feel it's part of the high school experience to be able to play in the game, but also to go and watch. So I think it's more important rather than somebody's six year old little brother maybe getting the fourth ticket for that player or something like that, being able to get the, you know, upper class kids a chance to go out and have a little bit of that normalcy. For volleyball, we're getting a streaming service installed over MEA. I will send out instructions on how that's viewed and how a subscription can be created after we get that set up with their people. Essentially, this is a subscription based service that puts the upfront cost much lower for us. Most of these systems are about $3,000 to $4,000 a year per camera. This one is a $2,000 one-time payment. And then the people viewing end up absorbing some of the costs if they choose to do that. On a normal year, we'd be losing revenue coming in by having people view it online. So it kind of offsets if we have people who say, no, I'll just stay home and watch it. We'd still generate some revenue from that. It also allows us in a year like this to make sure that everybody can have a chance to watch what's going on. It's not going to be just varsity level games. This is an automated camera that turns on like 20 minutes before an event and follows everything that goes on. And it'll be in the large gym in Olivia and the large gym in Bird Island. So that right now, we have junior high volleyball in Bird Island. A subscription, if somebody has a granddaughter, you know, friend playing junior high volleyball, those games will be shown the exact same way that a high school game will be shown. So everybody has the opportunity to watch those games even though they can't come into the gym. I talked with the Advisory Council this morning. We have a conference meeting on Friday. And we're looking at putting C squad volleyball in the same gym as the varsity in JV and just starting earlier so that all the games will be in the schools' gyms with the camera systems because almost every school in our conference has that. And I felt really bad when I realized that we're going to be able to show junior high, B squad in varsity, and C squad's going to be down there where nobody will be able to see. So hopefully, we get that through the conference. All of the basic COVID policies that you deal with, masking indoors, distance are within this set of protocols we have to follow. There's no handshakes. There are limited meetings. We have to space out benches and sidelines. Bussing, we do have buses big enough to transport our teams. We'll try to sit family groups together. We'll try to keep one of the seats as much as we can. We'll have assigned seats on buses so we know who's within six feet of everybody off the bus. So we don't hopefully have to quarantine large percentages. But if we have a student in a seat, we know they're sitting there. We know who's in front, behind, and the other side. That should cover everybody within six feet so we know who'd have that longer exposure to COVID. Football press box, Denny and I have to go through that tomorrow. We're not quite through or done with how we're going to do that yet. And we're still working on how we want to police masking at the football field. Ultimately, everybody has to have a mask to get into the game because there may be a group formed there that you can't distance yourself to get in through the tickets. We will have a separate entrance for home and away and a different entrance for the opposite team's players and the officials. The gates probably won't open until after the teams are on the field. So the players will go through, be on the field. We'll have the pendants around. Our fans will be up in our grandstands coming in from the west side of the field. The other team will be on the east side, coming in through the north entrance and funneling over to that side. So we should have zero contact in the adults from the two sides. There's no concessions allowed at anything. We'll put a bathroom, a portable bathroom on both sides, so there should be no reason for the fans to cross. So theoretically, you wouldn't have, our first home game against Atwater, Cosmos Grove City, wouldn't have any contact needed between the adults there. Obviously, there's going to be some on the field, but that group should be completely isolated from the fans. We're not allowed to have anyone come onto the field after the game. That's been kind of a tradition here and the families always kind of gather. There's lots of pictures taken. Those will have to be done somewhere else, essentially. It's a sacrifice, but it's a somewhat minor one. So. How we do masks, I've talked to schools that are requiring masks everywhere in the stadium throughout the game. I've talked to others that have said, if you're in the bleachers, you have to wear a mask. If you're, you know, lined up around the track where you can spread out, it's not being required. I've talked to others who have said they got to have it when they come in and we're not going to police it beyond that. So I'm on the field, so I don't want to make all these decisions without feedback from Mr. Benson, Mr. Menton, Brittany, who do a lot of the supervision at those events because it's got to be something applicable. There's no point having a rule if we can't enforce it. So we have to figure out what's going to work for our population out there and something that we can adhere to. So that was kind of what the the group that I met with this morning covered. My report goes into some other things, but are there any questions on this before I talk about how much money the High School League wants?
I do have a question for you. So the streaming, is that going to be across all districts? Meaning like if you have a child that's playing up in Benson, for instance, you're going to be able to use that same streaming subscription? Or how does that?
Our our system is through Pixalot. It's a nationwide company. It's supported by the essentially the Nationwide High School Association. Any school that uses Pixalot, you can watch what they have. If they use a different system, most of the schools in our conference have free streaming that they do through either Huddle or through their website. I would guess as a, if you're a parent of a football player or a volleyball player, you're going to be able to watch most with only paying that one fee. Now, it would be different for a parent from another school whose kids are coming here. They would have to pay our fee to watch ours. But their taxes don't support me and yours do. So I'm more happy than, I'm happier that it works out for our families on that way. They are able to buy a one month subscription. So if if a family from Morris was coming down here, they only have one game here for volleyball, but they might have, you know, basketball or wrestling in the winter. They would have the option to buy a one month subscription, which is like 11 bucks. So if you just want to watch one event, you know, by the time you drive down here from Morris, pay to get in, you're spending more than 11 bucks anyway. So it does give them an option to do it and still see it without paying a full. I think the annual fee is $70. That does also allow us to broadcast things like graduation on streaming, like any event in the gym essentially. We can stream. So if we get to a situation like last year with graduation where we're trying to figure something out, if we can have a smaller group in the gym, we'd be able to stream it and people could watch events like that.
And again, just a thank you to you. I know that this has been stressful and crazy and chaotic as well. So thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jamie. So.
I just want to mention, I kind of figured I could, you know, people are going to wonder how we find these sites. You know, I I have easier ways in which I could because I know a lot of the coaching and whatever. Like, hey, shut up, don't look at me. But for those that don't, you know, it would be something that's important, you know, if all of us are following, we can do whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I would assume that once we get instructions for where people have to go, we'll send that out to all the families district wide. We'll put it on the website and we'll also put it on social media wherever we can. Try to, that's easier to spread. I mean, we've got people sharing things that are on our socials. So that gets to grandma and, you know. The one, the thing I really like about this, having a couple of kids that are in junior high is if they're playing basketball games, their distant family, you know, grandparents on my wife's side who are two hours away can't really watch much. But this gives them a real option to be able to see what, you know, kids here are doing, even if they don't live around here. So even in the future, I think it's something that will be beneficial for us. Within my report, everything on there is a High School League. Not my fault. We knew an increase was coming. I believe, I don't, I have an estimated number of our fee this year was supposed to be 3,000. I think it was 3,020. So I think our bill from last year to this year went up by like $1,040. And that was an increase for every sport we participate in, an increase in our annual fee and an increase of $1 per student for our High School League number. So our High School League number, which is an adjusted enrollment that reduces free and reduced lunch a little bit, those students are kind of reduced. Our High School League number is 183 students. Because of that, we fit into the, one of the lowest categories for this new increase. But our fees jumped a few weeks ago from $3,000 this year to $8,000. The High School League is not planning on having state tournaments. Historically, about 70% of their revenue have come from state tournaments. So they're trying to cut their budget a little bit and still stay afloat by piggybacking the schools rather than going out for a loan or something like that. My biggest concern with this is the disproportional fee to outstate smaller schools compared to the bigger metro. And that seems to be fairly universal amongst a lot of the outstate school districts. If you noticed in the report, I said our fee per student is over $27. If you look at Wayzata, the largest school in the state, their their fee is $3.37 or $0.35 per ticket. And that's just not equitable. You know, our budget is roughly $9 million. Wayzata's budget is over $110 million. And their fee was about double what ours was. So the State High School League has heard this at a couple of Zoom meetings. They have said that invoices weren't sent out, only a notice that this bill was being established was sent out. They have a meeting on Thursday that they're going to have this on the agenda for. At this point, I would not expect to change, but it's still possible. The the question Dale has asked me a couple of times is what happens if we don't pay? And ultimately, we lose out on any postseason events if we don't. We lose insurance for our kids and our coaches if there'd be a severe injury of some kind. And the ability to participate in regular season events against other High School League schools even becomes fairly difficult. So this is essentially a monopoly. We don't have any way to really fight this unless we can get a bunch of schools to separate along with us to play a complete schedule against them. And there are talks of that in some areas. But within our conference, we would essentially be kind of forced out of the conference if we weren't a member of the High School League because they're not going to have a team in that can't play them. So I know that is the initial reaction is to heck with this. Let's just not pay it. It would make it very difficult and we'd lose a lot of opportunities for kids. And I know it's tough in the budget to find $5,000 at this time of the year, but I think justifying not paying it to the parents in the school district would be even more difficult than finding the $5,000. So. Any questions on that other than what the heck?
When the, this summer, when we got the increase to 3,000, we were, we looked at it and wow. And we were, that was a concern. And I think we all realized the times we're in. And so, okay. But then they they send out this letter and the 5,000. I just, the frustrating part for me is how the decision was made and a little bit of input from districts. And when you compare the small school to the large schools, you know, I just don't know how they can justify that. I. So I I don't, I'm, I'm feeling different than Mr. Flann feels because I think there might be a moment here that they'll look at that. I don't know, maybe I'm dreaming. But when you look at the difference between us and any of the metro schools, and this, he's comparing here to Wayzata, but, you know, I saw the figures to Prior Lake. And it's, it's the same. And so, and I turn around, I say, okay, the High School League did this. Now, do we take and turn around and give this to our parents, our families? And I guess I've been in business, in the school business long enough that I get frustrated and it seems like the school is always the last one on the totem pole. And I guess I've been in business, in the school business long enough that I get frustrated that it seems like the school is always the last one on the totem pole. We always, we always have, end up doing this. And I had a conversation with a person, a board member this, today about, about this and, and the lobbying that districts need to get involved in. Because they said the same thing. They said, they don't recognize us, like they, they don't support us like they should. And, and you've heard me talk about this prior, but this is another example. You know, the High School League, I told Mr. Flan, I said, I think what they should do is turn the key to the offices and walk away for a year. They're not providing any regional or state activities. So why not do that and just say, we'll provide insurance for kids, you do your schedule, you, you schedule your own. And you could call a High School League stuff. That doesn't make any difference. It can still be that. And you could have your local conferences, your local competitions and do that. And so I think, I just think there's some real mismanagement in the High School League right now and with what happened. So I, I'm not too excited about paying that bill. But I don't know what else we have, like Derek says. What options?
Is this like a one time deal thing or do we, do we know if it's okay? Now we got it from this year, we're going to get it again next year. You know what I mean? I mean, they're going to be, this year, they're going to want their money and then they're going to go, well, they'll pay it this year and let's go back and get it again. I mean, do we know?
Their, their long-term model is probably a move closer to something like this, more permanent.
Financial troubles starting to happen.
They, they haven't been in, in financial trouble. They've seen financial trouble on the horizon for a while. Where they're still finishing the year in the positive, but they used to finish the year hundreds of thousands in the positive and now it's down in that 10th. And ultimately, it comes down to the fact that they keep expanding tournaments, offering more and more things, which since I've been in the AD position here, every, almost everything that's been asked for, you know, can we have another class in track? Can we have another class in volleyball? They've said yes to all those things and all of those things add to their bills. And at some point, yes, those are good for kids, but paying $400 for athletic fees isn't a good thing for kids. And as those keep going up, we have to turn around and increase fees to pay for things like that. So I think, to answer your question, Sandy, I think in the long run, it might not be up at that 8,000 mark, but it's not going to come back to 3,000. No, if, if they negotiate something different on Thursday, I would guess you're going to see a similar structure in years to come. And realistically, we have 13, no, 15 sports that we offer through the High School League, I think. The opportunities that it creates, the $8,000 bill is probably just if you know it's coming and you budget for it and it's been built in. But I, I think the way they threw this out is, is unfair to schools. I mean, telling us we're going to pay 3,000, then just sending us a bill for five, an additional five after budgets are done, is not, not fair to any of the schools in the state. So they, they knew this was coming. And if, if it was going to be done, it should have been done a few months before when they were sending their initial bill out and trying to communicate what to budget for. I've talked to a lot of people that said, you know, the, the price per sport and stuff that we're paying for athlete isn't ridiculous, it's just a big shock right away. I mean, we do get a lot of opportunities for kids through the High School League. They provide insurance and all of those things and, and our kids get to play, you know, in the last few years in some of the best venues in the world. You know, because of the high school. But I just don't like the fact that it was, here's your bill and then we'd like a $5,000 tip on top of it.
That's, that's where I come from too, is I think Mr. Flan is, being honest with that, I think, you know, the process was, and I can't believe that this was a surprise. And I think, so I don't know. It's not fair, but I, like, what can we do about it? I, I don't know. So we'll see when, after Thursday's meeting, I, I'm hoping they'll take a second look at it.
I, I know it's on the agenda to be discussed. I don't know if it's a discussion or an action item yet, but they haven't enacted an official, you know, there hasn't been a vote to create this yet. So if the Board of Directors on Thursday would do something or strongly voice an opinion to restructure it, I think that would go a long way. I just don't know how, how ready that group is to, to make a change to it.
Mr. Con. I think Angel Barris should look at 1964 and see if they can run it. We didn't have a, they actually did. We passed those kind of, we had conference championships. Take a look at your old trophy pieces, Mr. Conference Championships, Regional Championships, Most State. I think we've been adding to our own glory and now we're paying the bill for it.
Yeah, and like I said, since I've been on and, and following this a lot more closely as an AD, there's very few asks that they've said no to, and every one of them costs more money. And they always justify it as it's, it's better for kids, but those events are also supposed to be rare. And, you know, adding another eight teams to every state tournament by another class is not always, sometimes you're just diluting the, you know, the, the what it takes to get there. So I think you'll see a very different vote on some of those things in the future though. And I did ask our regional rep, who is Bill Tower, is the representative from our region, he's the AD in Tracy. I did ask him to bring up the meeting Thursday that if this is going to be this way going forward, that at very least, the High School League should reduce or cap their ticket prices. If they're going to stop trying to bring in all their revenue from the state tournament. Because we've been very fortunate to have a bunch of them lately. And if you take a family up there and pay $18 a ticket to get in and hotel rooms, I mean, it gets very expensive for families on that end as well. And now we're going to have to pay these bills and raise fees there. I would hope that, you know, they, they look at that structure as well. And I know that's different from what we're talking about here, but that's another thing that should be offset is the direction they're going. They shouldn't have to, you know, drag the families over the coals and the, the kids to get into the state tournaments to watch their friends anymore. I will, I will wrap up unless there's more questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flan.
Derek.
Now you're sleeping.
Yeah.
What do you got, a number three on here? What's that on your paper here?
The number three is through discussion with some of the union reps in our coaches. The language that was added to the contracts, the coaches didn't feel was fair. That they would be paid zero if seasons were canceled essentially because of their out of season commitments. What I put on here was that I agree with that because I think that if our coaches don't do some of those off-season things, that, that's going to be viewed negatively by our communities. And if we're saying that that's not part of their job, I hope that if those issues are brought up, that the board will stand by that and say, no, if you're not doing things in the summer, that's not our expectation of you. So what I had in here was the out of season stuff that we were essentially saying we're not paying for. I hope we don't expect those things to be done. I hope we don't expect summer camps and weight room stuff and our principals aren't coming and asking coaches to help with this kid in science class because he's not behaving. Because we're saying we're not paying anything if you don't have events. And we are the only school that I know of that added any language like that. I know in our conference, at least four of the seven schools were paying everybody in full all year. One I know was reducing salaries and the other one, I don't know. I don't know what Melrose was doing. But, so that was the comment, just that, or the number three, that if we're going to say we're not going to pay them when they're not doing a regular season at all, that we don't expect those out of season things to be done. If they cease.
I, I think, I think what was stated, Derek, was that if they didn't finish out the season, we wouldn't finish out the contract, but we would pay them for the time they have done. I, I don't, I don't know where this zero payment came from in, in this whole situation.
Well, the, what was discussed at the last board meeting wasn't fall contracts, it was coaching contracts, which fall seasons have been allowed to start, but we don't know what winter or spring will be. So essentially that would have meant in the winter that if there were no season, there would have been no payments then. And like I said, I, I don't think that that is right. I would support reducing to a certain point, like a lot of schools may do, but I don't, I think we're taking people for granted if we're saying you didn't have games, you're not doing anything. Because I know they're doing things that are helpful here, even when there's no games. And that's not in their contract. I mean, if, if we don't want to pay for that, we're, that's fine. But I want the board to recognize that you're saying these are not part of your job. The, the stuff you do off-season is not an expectation. So if somebody's upset about that, that can't be held against the coach then.
So then you, you got day, the camp you were talking about, how do they get paid on that?
They don't. They consider it part of their job.
Yeah, I, I thought the boosters put that on.
No, like Jake Brewston has basketball weekly for kids. Nobody pays anything for it. He does that as the head basketball coach. Yeah, and they have, they have workouts. Kegory does workouts all summer. Zavki and I are in the weight room all summer. You know, there, there's things being done. And I know they're not part of the contract. They're outside the dates of the contract. All I was saying was, we can't expect those things then if we're saying no events, no pay.
Very well. I guess we'll have to go through the contract then.
Hey, Jeff, John wants to speak.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of what you're, what you're saying simply, yeah. I think we as a board, as a district, need to define what jobs the coaches are responsible for or what they're not. And maybe we need to just understand what actually goes to state every year. Because we won't have maybe some in the weight room all summer long. We won't have somebody out you know, coaching kids out of, out of contact, stick to your goal, stuff like that, things that they're doing, volunteering, volunteering right now. As I said, we need to turn the clock back, not we, but the whole society to turn the clock back. 1964, I used to use as a number and say, why do we, what were our expectations then? Why, we all like things to go better and bigger and bigger and bigger. We need to find this, what is expected of coaches. And if we can't back them, then we shouldn't expect anything. I shouldn't say expect anything. We can't back what they're doing, then we should tell them, you don't need to do it.
I think this is something that should be discussed amongst the coaches and myself and administration, right? And come back, and I know what they're trying to say and I think reading this, it could be, mean some different things. And, and I think what they're trying to get at is that coaching isn't just a seasonal sport. Coaching is a year and, and, but needs to be outlined like that and, and that's an expectation and so. So I think, but I, I think this could be, I think that's what they're trying to say, but I don't know that I read this, I read something else and so. So let's take a look at it and, and we'll refine it and, and get where everybody's coming from and so. I think, same as a teacher. A teacher just isn't a classroom from eight to three. Teachers are year round, you know, and things have changed since the 1960s. They aren't there. The expectations are different. We don't have parents sitting there saying, well, let's do it like we did back in the 60s. I don't know of one. I, that's a, that's the area that I can think about. And it wasn't like this. We played the season and that was it. That's not true anymore. And so, so do we go, so I, I think it needs to be, I think we all know what the intent is and let's work it out and and have that discussion first of all with the coaches and the team and bring it forward. And this has never happened till last spring. You know, we've never done this before. And so it's something new. So we're, okay. There's nothing to be decided at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing nothing else, we're going to move on. School Board Committee Report. Does anyone have anything they would like to report on? Oh, okay, keep moving. Bold Community Pool Report, included in our packet. Sounds like they're having some lessons and some group lessons in smaller numbers for various reasons this summer. Things are going well. If you have any questions, please call Tracy Johnson. She is more than willing to answer your questions on anything you would like. Pool related, pool related, that is. Get Tracy in trouble here. All right, moving on to new business. Number one, approve the truth and taxation hearing for November 30th of 2020. Motion is made by Desatell. I will second that. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we'll vote and we'll begin with Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Not myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number two, adopt, certify the proposed 2020 payable 2021 maximum levy. It's enclosure number one and Mr., thank you.
Second, Boleen.
Motion is made by Sagetall, seconded by Boleen. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. We'll begin with Jeff.
Oh, I knew you were going to do that. Aye.
Were you sleeping?
Yeah.
Come on, all right, wake up. Wake up, we're moving. Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number three, authorize the school board to hold a public hearing involving the decision of closing the Brad Island facility. Think it's, I don't have a enclosure for this. Motion is made by Bookdol.
Second, Sagetall.
Seconded by Sagetall. And it's discussion time. More questions?
Can you address that?
You kind of, you're going to talk.
If I can address this, I, what in my notes to you, I put the statute that deals with the closure of a site. And it's very specific what needs to be done. And so you can read that for your information. The board has to do it. You need to have a public hearing and state the necessary impracticality of the pro- and state the necessary impracticality of the proposed closing. And that notice needs to be a two-week notice. Then after that period of time, then you can have a hearing, a public hearing. Public invited and, and then you, you present your situation with, with the school. We spent quite a bit of time last, at our work session on, on sites, on facilities and, and what we're looking at. And I've thought a lot on that since then, and, and this is something, some of the things that I would like to summarize, um, some talking points of, uh, of looking at a school closure. And so our review, where, where I think we are at this point. Uh, it says, Bird Island building has served its purpose over the past one hundred years and as well beyond useful life. Reality is that the school buildings don't last forever. The district has repaired the building as much as possible over the years to extend its utility, utility. It's simply no, it's simply no longer healthy, safe, or viable space for education. And the investment required to fix it is just not fiscally responsible. Repairs, repairs to the facility would be more than the seventy percent of the cost of building new. In our last work session, we discussed the future of the Bird Island building. The building and the board directed me to look into the procedures required for the formal closure of the building. Now it's responsibility of the selected school board to decide whether to move forward with the permanent closure of the building. Is not fiscally responsible for our district to operate two school buildings in the long term. Operating two buildings is much more expensive than operating one, including maintenance, repairs, staffing, transportation, other issues. We've seen from the successful start of the school year, that it's worked out to have all students under one roof. Even in the time of social distancing, our staff and students have adjusted well to the transition to one campus. We're already discuss, discovering new ways to be more efficient, collaborate on various issues, and resolve problems in real time. From our recent survey of bold residents, we know that forty-six percent are favor replacing our existing schools with a new pre-K through twelve building. While twenty percent favor, twenty-eight percent favor investing in our current schools. The remainder are not sure and likely looking to the school board for leadership. Today we have a tremendous opportunity to partner with the hospital on a school and wellness center. That would be an asset to the entire community. This project would increase the quality of our education, create new career opportunities for our kids, and bolster our local economy. Then remind me, why we can't just repair the Bird Island building? That's a thought question that comes to mind. It would require major investments to make the elementary safe, healthy, and viable educational facility. The expert assessment identifies approximately seven point two million in need, needed updates to infrastructure alone without addressing any educational needs or curriculum improvements. Remember, it's not, it's a lot more expensive to operate and maintain two buildings. Over the course of several months in twenty nineteen, a citizen-led task force studied multiple options to address our building needs. Facilities committing, committee completed, concluded that the new school is the best value for investing taxpayers' dollars. This approach aligns with the guidance of the Minnesota Department of Education. It says the school district should no longer continue repairing a school with persistent infrastructure problems. Once the cost of the building repairs exceeds sixty percent of the cost of building new, the department recommends building new. Our repairs would be more than seventy percent of the cost of the new building. If the district sells the building, do we have an interested buyer? I met with the Bird Island EDA and their exploratory, exploratory committee on options with the building. I've spoken with local commercial business about their interest in the building. However, after having an architect, architect inspect the building this month, the, they're not so sure if it would cost too much to renovate and is no longer interested. If we can sell the building, what will happen? Closing the building and selling the building are two separate actions. So it may be too soon to speculay. Perhaps the city of Bird Island would want to consider repurposing the building for community use. Ultimately, the district may need to invest in some level of remediation to sell the building and demonstrate and, or demolish the structure to sell the land. What's the next step? And so this is what we're looking at tonight. No. Uh, I propose that the board holds a public hearing with aim to permanently close the Bird Island building. This is a right step forward so we can focus on long-term solution that creates a safe, healthy learning environment for students while providing the best value for taxpayers. These are thoughts that, since our meeting last Monday, since our work session, are some thoughts that we put together and summarizes what we were reviewed last week. And so with that, I read you what the statute says. And so now, uh, it's up to the board to, to make a decision, uh, whether they want to look at closing the building or not. We'd have to have public hearings, so that had to be put together. And to publicize it and get the, get it done in the way it's supposed to be, the statute reads. The week of October nineteenth would be the week that we could have the public here. And so I guess it's up to the board here to make that recommendation, authorize the administrative team are moving forward with the hearing. Again, it's a public hearing. That's when you hear what the public is telling you and then the board will make the decisions from what comes out of that public meeting.
So at this point, at this point Dale, all we're doing is going through the process of shutting it down. It is not completely closed until that, the decision after the hearing?
The board has to make that decision and you need to have a public hearing. At that public hearing, then the details will be presented, the information will be presented about the building. And then, yes, then after that hearing, and then you'd make the decision to do what you want to do.
To close it or not to close it?
Yes.
So tonight is not a decision, a final decision of closing it?
No, not at all. You have to go through the public hearings before you can do that. And the board is the only one that can do that.
Cause that, that's exactly what, we have a motion and a second, and it was authorize the school board to hold a public hearing involving the decision of closing of the Bird Island facility. So we're authorizing the school board to hold a public hearing. And what we're gonna talk about is involving the decision of, of closing the Bird Island facility. So it's, it's authoring, authorizing us to set this public hearing.
It's not saying anything about closing the building.
Right, that's.
What you're saying.
Your decision is whether you're gonna close it or not.
But.
That's when.
That's after the public hearing.
Yes, this is to have the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
No, that would be the whole building?
Yes. That's, um, that's a decision the board will make from the hearing.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, there's been the talk of, uh, I know that the business I talked with wanted, the one question they asked was, would the school be interested in leasing the gym? And my comment back was, if it's viable, if it's a situation to work out, of course. And, uh, so those are the things that would work, that you would work out in a, the negotiations with the buildings. You know?
Any other discussion?
This is not, it's a situation where we're deciding, and I'm being redundant. Deciding to have a hearing.
Yes.
Situation to decide if we're gonna leave. To abandon the building. That, that's not the decision now. The decision is to have the hearing.
Right.
Yes.
All right, with that, we will vote and we'll begin with Tracy.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number four, approve transportation reimbursement for the following family of district students attending non-public school outside of ISB twenty-five thirty-four for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Enclosure number two.
Almost.
Yep, this is an annual item.
Second, Sagetall.
Motion is made by Benson, seconded by Sagetall. Are there any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we'll vote and we'll begin with Melissa.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
And myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number five, discuss the proposed MSHSL membership fee and the fall sports schedule for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. This is just a discussion item. Wait.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, uh, like Derek mentioned.
Mine's a little different than everybody else's. That's why I say that, sorry.
It was not, this is not a bill. This is a proposal. And so, uh, but I think, uh, we entertained the discussion a bit prior, and if you've got any questions for Mr. Flannwell, he's here, is about the membership keys and, and we'll just have to see what comes out on Thursday to be more specific about it.
Derek, is there a way we can get that representative up here to explain this to us? And explain the reason for all this and why we gotta pay more versus larger schools?
The, the representative that we have is the A.D. from Tracy Milroy Valleton. I, I can't imagine he's gonna go school to school and explain this. Um, he's the voting member on the board. And that's, that's, he represents region three A and four A. We're in region three A, so he's our representative there. I, I, I think we'd be asking a lot of them to come to a meeting and explain this. If you've got questions, I can probably answer them almost as well as he could, and if I can't, I can get in touch with him.
Yeah. I would, I would like you to pursue this if you can. Why, why the difference in the, such a big difference between the larger schools versus us? I, I, like Dale was saying, I don't think that's right. And I mean, if they, if they gotta have that much money, well then maybe they should start cutting some more of their stuff up there. Cause we're to the, we're to the bone now.
And that's what's on their, their agenda for Thursday, is the response to the, essentially the criticism and the, the concern from the smaller schools outside the metro area.
Okay.
Our, our board rep is Melissa to the state high school league, so I'll turn it over to her and she can take care of it for us. She's got all the power.
Hey, everybody, everybody can make a difference. You can too.
But I do think that we need to have a response or an answer of some, some sort. Um, and maybe he would explain something to us, Derek, where we could visit with him. Probably as a team, as a, as your advisory group. We could do that.
To, to visit with?
The rep.
The rep?
The board rep.
But I can ask.
Well, I, I think.
My issue is, he's in the same job I am, so I know he's really busy and he represents like fifty schools. So.
Okay, I, I would like to answer a simple question is, how did they determine this fee? That's all, you know, he doesn't have to come here, he doesn't have to, but I think as a board rep, you as a board member here, if you're a fee like this, the public's gonna come and ask you why. And so I, I think he's, he's good. I mean, he's.
I can, I can certainly send him a question like that and he'll get back to me.
Yeah, I think that's, I think we are entitled to that. And it might not change anything. But I think, um, that to me is a little, and I think they need to take a look at.
I, I would say on his behalf that representing smaller schools, he's a class A rep, which is the smaller half of the schools in Minnesota. I'm almost positive that he did not vote to approve this.
Yeah.
I, I know it was not, I mean, it was a somewhat split vote. So you might have a response from somebody who's just as frustrated about it as we are. So.
I think that's okay.
Yeah.
That's okay. We'll let Melissa take care of that. Yeah. Yes, this is not a bill. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Yep.
All right, uh, we'll move on to approve the Southwest-West Central Service Cooperative contracts for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
So move, Boleen.
Motion is made by Boleen. Seconded by Bookdell. Any discussion or questions? On the contract? Hearing nothing, we'll vote and we'll begin with John. Yes, Jeff?
Is that Dale, is that that new contract you were talking about or not?
That is part of it. This is, this is, the Southwest can, and the co-op provides our special ed services and, and, and any other, other contract services where our finances of our computer system, our smart finances through the co-op, they're the ones that are, that own that. And so that's part of it. And then our extended service subscription for, uh, for payroll is added to it. And the remainder of the amount has to do with special ed services. And so you can see, it's, it's very significant. Uh, and so, but they provide the OT services, the special education services. I think another big one is our speech and language pathologists. All those services that we probably can't offer as an individual district. And so they can offer it as a co-op through the Southwest. And so that's what it is. It's mainly special ed, in fact.
You got the health and safety management there. What's that all about? I thought we hired a nurse.
That's not the nurse. That's management.
Oh.
That's, that's, uh, health and safety. That's, IA is a supplement of that. And so they're also part of that. They do our cell, our health and safety management, our, our reporting and such and.
Okay.
So, but that's not that.
This isn't, it's an annual contract that we approve. Um, I guess that it's like, one thing that is added to it is the payroll.
Okay.
Here, so.
All right, I'll make, motion made.
We already got it. Yep, we got it.
I'm sleeping, remember?
I know, wake up. No, it's all right. It's all right. Um.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, yep, but, um, yeah, yeah, it was you, John. John, you're up. Uh, Sandy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number seven, approve the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one EA temporary master agreement between independent school district twenty-five thirty-four and the Bold EDA.
I thought we were gonna send that back for clarification.
You want to table that?
Table until next month.
Back about the, um, the fees for the, uh, salaries for the.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that table until next month.
Okay, next month. All right. Um.
John just so moved it.
So moved the table?
So moved the tabling until October. Um, I will second that to table it until October. Oh, we'll start with Sandy. Any other discussion? Sorry, give me some.
Aye.
Sandy? We're all getting a little tired, aren't we? All right, great. Sandy is an I. Jamie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yeah.
Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Of staying.
Oh, yep. Um, John?
Table, yes.
Yeah, that's what we're voting on. And I myself, I am an I. So making this one a little more.
Sorry.
That's all right. Melissa? All right, motion passes five to one with one abstention. All right, number eight, approve the Renville County Health Service Agreement for the 2020-2021 school year. It's enclosure number six.
Some will be.
Motion is made by Boleen.
Seconded Sagatol.
Seconded by Sagatol. Any discussion or questions? Again, another annual item, little different than it's been in the past.
So this is, this is, it's an annual item, whereas the position that we're talking about earlier, that's a separate position.
Yes. We have to have, correct, we have to have.
We have to have eight. We have to have.
Right.
We have to have a, this high school, we're going to have a contracted school nurse, a licensed school nurse. And this fulfills that requirement. And and it's been the 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 school nurse was, I think it was like three days or three and a half days, it used to be. And now we changed that and we hired our own, if you remember, LPN. It'd be full time to have her in the district every day. And then our school nurse, our licensed school nurse is just one day. What she does is the paperwork that is necessary, that needs to be discussed on our end. And so she completes that. That's IEPs and special.
Yeah, there is a a separate school nurse certification that that we have to have that that she has. So.
But this is not something that we have to have.
Pardon?
Yes.
This is one, this is not necessarily something that we have to have, and you said yes.
Yeah.
We have to have a school, a licensed school nurse.
And it's number eight, and is that the have to have?
Yes, that's the contract with the county. Yeah.
We have to have.
The LPN is is our contract. We hired the LPN.
But she's not a licensed school nurse.
No.
There's a, there's a distinction there. Any other questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote and begin with Jamie.
Aye.
Jeff?
Well, I'll go with an I on this one. Not like me though.
Well.
I thought we had an LPN. I thought that was.
But she is not a licensed school nurse. There's a distinction here that.
I didn't know there was, so.
Yep. Sorry. Okay. You're going with it though?
Yeah.
Okay, Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Number nine, approve the application for free school breakfast and lunch for all students enrolled in the district regardless of their eligibility. This funding is through the USDA and will be effective September 28th, 2020 through December 31st of 2020 or until funding is exhausted. It might not last that long from what I'm hearing, so. Motion is made by Benson.
Second. Go ahead.
Seconded by Bookdell. Any discussion or questions?
Just one quick question, Dale. Was Margaret planning on sending out another email who's asking if parents they want to reconsider signing up for these lunches for when their kids are at home for 7 to 12 kids? Because early on, we have this, I've talked, you know, lunches for kids on the hybrid days.
Yeah.
And some parents.
I gotta take.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had her letter here.
Was that Melissa? I could barely hear you on that.
I was just asking if there was going to be another sign going out for parents to sign up for these lunches when they're at home. You know, for picking up lunches at the school. Some parent, we all, we all received that email already before, this is before that this came out. And those parents that opted out, would they have the option of jumping back on board?
Letter went out today.
Okay.
Announcing it that it started the. This is was in place earlier, but we didn't think there was enough support and it was going to not run through December because the funding wasn't allowed. Plus, Margaret was concerned if she did do, she could lose some commodities, which would be a loss. And so we were hesitant to do this. But then it came out that it's likely that it will continue. And to me, it was.
We've got Margaret here and she would like to talk.
Margaret, you're on. I thought you would be.
She's here.
On by now. Sorry, but maybe you could address it, Margaret. You know more than anybody about it.
I don't know if I know more than anybody, but if families want to sign up for the meals, they can go on to the Bold webpage under where the school lunch menus are and they can, the form is there and they can sign up for meals if they're distance learning or online learning every day of the week. The applicant, or the form is ready for them to sign up on.
Can I answer a question?
Thank you, Margaret.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Can they do it part-time? That means we have that part-time distance learning?
If you're, if you're red group, you sign up for, and you say you're the red group, and then you get meals Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. If you're silver group, you sign up as silver group and you'll get meals Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. If you're at home doing distance learning five days a week, you say online learning and you'll get meals the five days.
Thank you, Margaret.
Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
So here we go again.
Yeah, yeah, here we go again.
Here we go.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Melissa, for clearing that up.
Thanks, Margaret.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing nothing else, we're going to vote. We're going to start with Jeff. You ready?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Uh, number nine, upcoming dates, October 26, 2020, school board meeting. Uh, it probably won't be in the district office. We'll probably try it again like this. I'm assuming we'll be in the same, so in the media center in Olivia and and via Zoom. We'll see how this goes. We'll try to update and and please feel free to, public, please feel free to give us some feedback on how it went tonight. And we'll try to do our best to make sure that everybody can attend in whatever way they feel comfortable. So that's what's going on for upcoming dates. Number 10, adopt a resolution to acknowledge and accept gifts, grants, and bequests. Member Benson, member Jeff Benson, introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption. Whereas Bird Island Lions Club has generously donated $500 toward the Bold Robotics Team. Therefore, be it resolved by the Bold School Board to gratefully accept this gift. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution, foregoing resolution was duly seconded by member Hanson. And upon a vote being taken thereon, the following voted in favor thereof. Tracy?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an I. The foregoing resolution was approved this 28th day of September, 2020. And with that, I would really enjoy a motion to adjourn. Motion is made by Benson. Seconded by Sagatol. Any discussion? John's already getting up, so we better get moving. Uh, motion, Melissa?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jeff?
I don't know. I guess.
Oh, boy, say aye. Tracy? And myself, I am an I. Motion carries. Thank you all so very much. Enjoy the rest of your evening.